Welcome to the Monday, August 3rd, 2020 virtual session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the deputy city clerk please call the roll? Actually, I think the regular city clerk's gonna call the roll, right?
I can do that today.
A little edit from last week.
Sorry. Honorable Mayor Panda Leon?
Here.
Alderman Morris?
Here.
Alderman Karas?
Here.
Alderman Rommel? Just saw her. Alderman Notes?
Here.
Alderman Preschlack?
Here.
Alderman Goshgarian?
Here.
Alderman Bushman?
Here.
And Alderman Weber? Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with state statute, I have made a determination that it was not practical or prudent to schedule an in-person city council meeting because of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is why this August 3rd, 2020 city council meeting is being held remote. The first item on the agenda is reports of city officers, comments by mayor. I would like to introduce First Eric Goshgarian, Alderman of the Third Ward, and Rick Amos, Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Rec Foundation, to make a very important announcement.
Good. Thank you very much, Mayor Panda Leon and members of city council. I'm excited today to present you to council. Basically, the culmination of a year-long project. It's a life safety equipment project that specifically pertains to Lake Forest Beach. Just a brief background, as we all know, city and council, during our initiation or familiarization with the various department heads, we go from department to department. And one of the things that stood out to me was when I was taking my tour of the firehouse with Chief Seibert, that he showed me what the rescue boat was that the Lake Forest Fire Department uses to go out on rescues out on the lake. And actually, it's a Lake County asset and part of the Mavis system. It is greatly appreciated, but it's really more suited for inland lake rescues. And although helpful, it's not really well-designed for those open lake rescues that we do see out on Lake Michigan. It seemed as though that we could do better. So I set about addressing this issue with a group of people. We formed an ad hoc committee. And it was really teamwork and committee consisted of Chief Pete Seibert, Deputy Chief Kevin Cronin, Sally Swarthout, Director of Parks and Recreation, Aaron Dollson, who is the beachfront manager, Will Arnold, who is the sailing program director, and then from the Friends Foundation, Fred Jackson, as well as Rick Amos. Sat down and brainstormed and talked about what that Mavis asset was and what really the needs and wants of the city of Lake Forest were. So first, we went about identifying what we needed. We went through several iterations with members of the boating community and really tried to narrow it down as to what would be the best thing for the city of Lake Forest. We came up with a few ideas and then we all agreed on one in particular. Once we had identified what we wanted, we had to go about the process of funding this. This is a totally privately funded process. This is not, we've not used any taxpayer dollars. And we reached out to members of the boating community, the Friends Foundation, some of our community corporate partners, and we really got a tremendously generous response. You know, the beach is the jewel of our community or one of the jewels, and it seemed as though with the increased lake activity with some of the incidents that have happened out on the lake, and I'll give you just a few statistics in a moment, it seemed as though a new rescue boat was in order. And I'm pleased to tell you today, and Rick will do a short presentation on it, that the Friends Foundation, which was really the glue that kind of held this all together, and I'm wearing their polo shirt tonight, was able to bring all these parties together and codify what will now be a permanent asset in the Lake Forest inventory and will be used jointly by the fire department and the sailing program. Just this year, to date, and I got these numbers from Aaron Dollson this morning, total beach visitors so far this year is over 96,000, which is a tremendous uptick from what we've seen over the last two years. On average, it's been about 82,000. We still have five more weeks to go. As Alderman Rommel pointed out, we're getting more and more inclement weather out on the beach and it does have destructive impacts on the shore, but you know, so far to date, they have been involved in five offshore rescues. There are, the utilization down there is just skyrocketing because of COVID and people not going away. So this is a park that really needs all the attention we can give it. I'm thrilled to present Rick Amos to give you some information on this rescue boat. Very happy and very proud to have worked with all those people that I had talked about before, but you know, it just really sort of exemplifies the commitment to the community that so many people have. They're willing to pull together and fund an incredibly important project like this. So I'd like to introduce Rick Amos, who's a member of the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation. Rick, are you available?
I'm here, Dr. Goshgarian. Thank you for the introduction and thank you for allowing me to meet with you this evening. This is, as Dr. Goshgarian said, this has been a very interesting project, one well-needed in our community. You know, the beachfront is such an important asset for the city of Lake Forest. And I know we have other statistics in terms of the number of issues out on the lakefront, and they continue to escalate. So something needed to be done, and so I'm happy today to announce that I've been a part of of an effort with many within the community to make this important asset a reality. And we were able to do it in a little under a year, which is certainly feels like a record in terms of trying to do something like this. And so we're pleased to announce that we worked with Brunswick Corporation and several folks within the community to identify the right type of vessel used for rescues, retrievals of boaters with issues as well as swimmers and can be used all up and down the lakefront. If any of you have spent time at the beach or much time at the beach, as I've been a boater here for more than 15 years, it's a wonderful asset and it's a wonderful thing, but boy, that when that lake gets nasty, it gets nasty quick. And unfortunately, a lot of people get caught in the wrong place at the wrong time trying to enjoy that water. And so we've acquired a 28-foot center console. You can see there in the lower right-hand picture. This is a Boston Whaler boat, and for those of you that aren't boaters, Boston Whaler is a Brunswick product. So we were fortunate to be able to work with a local company to help us source this vessel. And what's unique about the Boston Whaler is these are unsinkable boats. You can literally stall them in half and they won't sink due to a proprietary technology they use in building the mold of the boat. But as you see, it's got a center console pilot house that's designed for inclement weather. And then the perimeter of the boat inside is a flat surface, so in the event of a search and rescue, you have adequate space and flooring, if you will, to administer aid necessary. And I think I was on the boat earlier this week. I think you can probably get five or six people in a prone position, if you will, down on the floor of that vessel if you need to. So quite an upgrade and improvement over the the rubber dinghy, if you will, in the top left corner of the photo there. And so you know, the biggest advantage here, if you talk to the fire chief and those that have been involved in these attempts over the years, and I'm sure most of you are familiar with those incidents when they occur, you know, there are four, five, six-foot waves out on that lake, if not larger, and so the red boat was just not appropriate to do that. And this boat is specifically designed for inclement weather. So we're very excited to share this asset and donate this asset to the city this evening. As Alderman Goshgarian said, this was a project that happened rather quickly once we identified it, as we were able to meet with several sponsors in the community to raise private funding for the asset. And we're happy to announce that we had two large significant contributors and then some individual donors that helped make this boat a reality. We'll be putting out a press release later this week. We're working through some of the language with some of the donors to make sure their branding needs, if you will, and their press release expectations. But we'll be putting out something later this week in terms of the announcement of who the major sponsors were in the process. So I'm happy to answer any questions at this point in time and look forward to handing over this asset to the city. And the decals and badging will be put on it. It'll be identified as a Lake Forest Fire and Rescue Watercraft. And so we'll have reflective badging on there. Some of the assets of it, it does have scuba tank storage. It does have the ability, as I mentioned, to administer aid to folks. It is 28 feet in design with dual motors. And it's just going to be a wonderful, a wonderful asset down at the beach for the fire department as well as the sailing club and other organizations within Lake Forest to use during the course of the year. It will be in the water, you know, during the boating season and probably a little bit beyond. So it's kind of in the water and ready to go should the fire department get a call and need to attempt a rescue or get on the mic rather quickly during the season. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is an unexpected, but much-needed and very much appreciated gift. One question I have is just, you know, the cost. It's another example of Lake Forest private residents stepping up to make the city a better place, and I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, so the boat is approximately $200,000, which includes a transportation trailer, you know, to shuttle the boat around and all the equipment on it. It's got lights, it's got siren. It even has the ability, if we need to pump water, we can add an attachment to it to do that in the event you want to turn it into a fireboat. And, you know, all the bells and whistles that were needed for, you know, a Lake Michigan vessel. As I said earlier, we work with Brunswick. They make a variety of watercraft and different needs and their recommendation, you know, for Lake Michigan and our community was this watercraft. Other marinas, if you will, along Lake Michigan lakefront have a similar watercraft. So this is a highly recommended and a well-tested boat, and the total cost was about $200,000.
If I could interject one more thing, what makes this especially timely is the Lake County asset, the Mavis asset, was housed at the firehouse. And you can imagine if there is an event, the call has to go to the fire department. They've got to transport their boat down to the beach. That boat has to get deployed and that's valuable time. This asset will be down at the beach. The other thing that was brought up to me by Chief Seibert was apparently the county or Mavis wants to redeploy their boat away from the lake. So apparently, our timing couldn't have been better because they were going to take it. So we found some good luck there and we were able to get on this project and make it happen quick enough. And the safety issue will be seamless. And apparently, they're setting up training with the fire department and members of the sailing program as we speak.
It's certainly a fantastic addition and something most appreciative. And hopefully, no one challenges you by cutting it in half to test whether it still floats, we can preserve it in the current pristine condition. Question though, what's the arrangement for beyond our borders, the use of the boat, you know, up and down Lake Michigan? Do we have anything that is memorialized in terms of how far that boat would be made available for rescue or other type of operations?
Chief Seibert on?
Actually, Deputy Chief Kevin Cronin is on, and maybe I'll ask him if they could pull, if the host can pull him up, he could answer that question.
Good evening. How is everyone tonight? The answer to that, that is still in discussion. Highland Park, we'll probably go to our neighbors, at least down to Highland Park and up through Lake Bluff and North Chicago, but we have not discussed any farther than that area right there. Those are the partners that we work with already on the lakefront. Highland Park responds and helps us out and same with Lake Bluff. So we are gonna, again, service those areas, but we haven't discussed any farther than that.
Thank you. Chief, this is Jed Morris. What additional training, if any, is required for your team to man and utilize the equipment?
It's really, we, all of our departments trained on the boat we have now. Obviously, it's a much different boat, so working with the sailing committee, the club down there and their Aaron and Will, who are very experienced in driving this type of boat, we're going to get out with them training. We're looking at an outside instructor coming in to go over the dual engines with us. And we are in the process of getting everybody the boat safety certification through the state DNR for the entire department.
Good. Well, Ara, this is Jed again. Congratulations on, well done. That's just a tremendous effort with everybody that you've assembled and the department. Hats off to you guys.
Thank you. Really, really was a team effort and everybody brought a lot to the table. And I was just very fortunate to work with a talented group of people and everybody knew what they were doing, that's for sure. So thank you to the team. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ara, for leading the charge here, and for Rick too. Just job well done. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is 2020, 2021 Board and Commission Appointments and Reappointments. William Redfield is resigning his position on the Historic Preservation Commission. We'll approve a resolution of appreciation for him later on in the meeting. And taking his place is Robin Pettit. I would entertain a motion to approve my appointment. Do I have a second? Okay, Biddy, roll call vote, please. Biddy, you're muted.
I know. My mouse would move. Alderman Morris?
Hi.
Alderman Karas?
Hi.
Alderman Rommel?
Hi.
Alderman Notes? Alderman Preschlack? Alderman Goshgarian?
Hi.
Alderman Bushman?
Hi.
Alderman Weber?
Hi.
Eight, yay, zero, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Biddy. Next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution in support of temporary expanded outdoor activity and events associated with not-for-profit entities during the COVID-19 pandemic. This will be an approval by motion. And Kathy Cerniak, Director of Development, will make a brief presentation.
Head nods if you can hear me and see my screen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have a resolution included on page 19 of your packet tonight. This resolution is really a follow-up to the resolution you approved in June as our businesses were reopening. At that time, the council asked staff to think about how we could also support not-for-profits. This resolution really requests approval from the council to give staff flexibility to allow us to work with nonprofits much in the way that we did with retail businesses. The recommendation tonight, I'll review that briefly and then give you some background, is to approve a resolution that directs staff to offer perhaps heightened assistance to not-for-profit groups in their planning efforts. Certainly, staff from various city departments, city manager's office, police, fire, parks, public works always work together with not-for-profits, but at this point in time, there's some unique questions that have come up that really demand and staff could really offer some benefit by offering some additional staff time in helping to plan these events. The resolution also authorizes us on a limited basis to allow not-for-profits to use rights-of-way, public land, public parks, much the same way that we've seen some restaurants, retail businesses, and service businesses do over the last four to six weeks, to offer, I'll call it, equipment like barricades, to be a bit more flexible with respect to displays that can occur perhaps in some of our empty storefronts. We've seen some interest in working cooperatively with some of our landlords. And finally, to waive special event fees on a limited basis, given that we don't anticipate many events of this type to be occurring during this phase four. The resolution specifically is targeted to events that occurred during the phase four of the Restore Illinois Plan. In working with not-for-profits, we would keep as our top priority health and safety of those attending a small-scale event and really of the community at large. We're certainly hearing about events that are large and perhaps have unintended consequences beyond those events, so we want to be sensitive to that. We would hope that this effort would help to maintain the presence of our not-for-profits, the presence, visibility, and awareness of the various not-for-profit groups in our community during this time where many of them would be holding larger events during the season. And some of them have become quieter just simply because of the current situation. Again, we would be looking at supporting small-scale events, perhaps dispersed events. I think you'll hear some of that tonight from Open Land, some creative ideas they have. And really to work with these not-for-profits to continue to promote a sense of community, even when people are a bit more isolated. If there are unique, creative ways to bring our community together doing so safely, we want to be part of that. The city's role again would, this resolution really allows us, most importantly, to be nimble, to respond quickly to ideas that might come up with a short timeframe. And instead of needing to come to the council to request specific approval for perhaps a street closure or something like that, we're asking for a bit more flexibility from the council at this time. Many of our not-for-profits are authorized through a special use permit, which in some cases can be fairly restrictive. So again, we're asking for your approval to allow us to bend the rules perhaps a little, to do a bit of experimenting during this phase four time with the thought that we may learn some things during this time that we may want to consider and bring back to you in the future. So again, our recommendation tonight is that you approve the resolution on page 19. We will implement it carefully, but again, with an eye toward being flexible and creative. If you choose to do so this evening, it will be appropriate to approve on motion, approving the motion. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Kathy?
Thank you, Kathy. This is Alderman Karas. A couple of things. Are most of the events which you're speaking, are they benefit events to support the fundraising activities of the nonprofits and our communities? And also, are they, are these events that have been identified and are beginning to be planned or have yet to be identified and yet to be planned?
The events that are not occurring range from the Deerpath Art League Art Fair, for instance, bagpipes and bonfires, obviously, Lake Forest Day. So all of those events are certainly fundraising events, but also tend to be very community-oriented events. In their place, what we're seeing are some much smaller scale ideas. For instance, Deerpath Art League, we've had some conversations about over a five or eight or 10-day period using storefront windows and promoting some of the artists that way. So these smaller events certainly don't have the same potential for raising funds, but they do serve the purpose of bringing the community together, making sure the community remembers that these organizations exist and really fulfilling their mission. Certainly, there's a hope that that would mean that people continue to support these organizations financially. But the events we will see during phase four are much different than the types of events that are being canceled throughout the community and really throughout the country. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it certainly does. Thank you so much. And I just want to add, if there's anything that I can do to support those organizations planning those types of activities, please reach out to me.
Thank you.
Kathy, I just want to thank you for bringing this forward. As you know, this has been something that I brought up several months ago. I know the mayor and I talked about this as well. And Mayor Panda Leon was very supportive of an initiative to help out our not-for-profits. And I'm just delighted to see this put in the form of a resolution as we're moving forward. So thank you for listening and for your efforts to put this together. Thank you very much. And I'm sure the not-for-profits, our beloved not-for-profits in this community will be most appreciative. So thank you.
Other questions are coming? I'm sorry, it sounded like somebody was starting to say something, but maybe it was just an echo.
Yeah, no, this is Ted. Hello?
Yes, Ted, go ahead.
Great. Kathy, thanks for all your work on this. And I think the restaurants in particular that have been able to take advantage of outdoor seating these last couple of months has been to say hugely successful is probably not fair, but given the circumstances, a huge help. As we're starting to look at fall coming upon us, and I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but has there been thought to allowing this outdoor seating and tented seating to remain open as weather becomes more inclement and allowing them to have heated tents and things like that? Can you speak to that? Any thoughts that you've had on that subject?
We've had some preliminary discussions with some of the restaurants, not only restaurants, but churches and schools using tents and different outdoor venues. I think we will continue to be creative, of course, with an eye again toward safety. If we're starting to talk about heaters and cords and generators, we will be working very closely with the fire department. But yes, as long as we're in phase four and as long as we get the authorization from the council to be creative and flexible and be able to quickly respond, we will continue to do what we're doing. I will say that not everyone feels the same way about the outdoor seating or the closing of streets. So we are trying to balance various interests and certainly taking note of the various opinions.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted. Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? Okay, with that, I would consider a resolution supportive temporary expanded outdoor activity and events associated with not-for-profit entities during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Some move. Some move.
Hey, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Hi.
Alderman Karas?
Hi.
Alderman Rommel?
Hi.
Alderman Notes?
Hi.
Alderman Preschlag?
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Hi.
Alderman Bushman?
Hi.
And Alderman Weber? Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Very good. Thank you. I'd like to return for a moment to the rescue boat before I hand things over to Jason for a minute. I was down, most of you know I'm a pretty active sailor and a member of the Lake Forest Yacht Club, which most of you don't even know exists, but it's a very exclusive group. If you have a boat and $50, you can join. Actually, not everybody even has a boat. But I was down there last Sunday, not this past Sunday, but the one before, and it was a very deceptive and very dangerous day. The lake was flat, completely flat, as you stood on the beach. But when you went out about, I don't know, maybe a half a mile, which isn't that far, it sounds like a lot, but it's not very far, all of a sudden, the wind was quite strong, and it was blowing straight out, straight out from the land. And so it was very challenging if you went out to the point where the wind picked up, which is where you wanted to be, to get back in. And there was, in fact, a windsurfer who was unable to get back in, and there was a mayday call while I was out there. I heard it on my radio. This is not an unusual event. And so the importance of having equipment that could handle something similar to that, like over this weekend, where the lake was much more turbulent and where the waves were six or seven feet pretty consistently from Thursday all the way through today, I guess, is crucial. And so just a huge gift and a huge new asset for our community. So thanks again. I don't want to belabor the point, but I don't know that people realize how crucial this is. This is going to save lives, and it's also going to protect our firefighters and our police in their duties, because that other boat was just flat-out dangerous in rough weather, really not capable of functioning in rough weather. So the Coast Guard would get called in on a regular basis as a result. And that was a whole slower and even slower process. So anyway, thanks again, Era, for a great insight, great inspiration. Thanks to Rick and the friends and all the donors that got behind this so quickly and effectively. I will now move on to comments by the city manager. Jason?
Great. Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of City Council. Good evening. I'm happy to continue with the good news stories in my report. First up, I wanted to take an opportunity to highlight some of the recent initiatives from our finance department. I think as everybody is aware on the council, and hopefully many people in the community are taking advantage of, our finance department has really done a tremendous job over the last couple of years, increasing our, the city's financial transparency, most notably in creating the Financial Transparency Portal on the city's website. And those efforts continued in the presentation of our comprehensive budget. I think, as the council recalls, when that was presented a couple of months ago, the finance department really did a tremendous job in overhauling the appearance of the budget. And as we transitioned into fiscal year '21, I know a major initiative of the finance department was not just to continue to provide access to all of the financial information to the public that we currently provide, but really to start, you know, providing that information in a digestible way and in a manner that's easier to understand, sort of in layman's terms, for people who aren't real familiar with municipal budgets or budgeting. And so as part of that effort, Elizabeth and her team have been developing several new financial stories, if you will, and we're pleased to share with you tonight the first of those, which is the Fiscal Year '21 Budget and Brief. So I'm going to, with that, turn it over to Elizabeth, and I'll ask her to present the Budget and Brief.
Thank you very much, Manager Wisha. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm very excited to give this presentation tonight, because this has been a goal of the finance department for a few years. By way of background, the city finance department began a relationship with a company called OpenGov in 2015. Initially, that relationship was entered into to work around some of the reporting and graphical deficiencies that we had with our prior ERP system, HTE. It allowed us to do better reporting to departments and better reporting to the public by importing that data from HTE into OpenGov. And then OpenGov, very soon thereafter, became a very important partner, as Manager Wisha mentioned, in our Financial Transparency Initiative. Our financial transparency area of the city's website includes an actual portal that goes into the OpenGov data and allows the user to query and review information on their own. And so that is all open to residents at the current time. We began, as we developed the FY21 budget for the finance department, we opted to submit a request for funding to enhance our relationship with OpenGov and add a feature that they implemented a few years ago called Story Builder. And Story Builder is really intended, as Manager Wisha indicated, to communicate financial information in a very condensed format, but actually embed and import both financial and non-financial data into a story. So we opted to have the Fiscal Year '21 Budget and Brief be our first story, and so we're going to give you a live demonstration of that this evening. Before I begin, I absolutely want to recognize the tremendous efforts of both Assistant Finance Director Diane Hall and Accountant Mark Krageras in this initiative. They've really been the muscle behind it, and especially Mark has put significant time and effort involved in actually learning the application and being able to develop and modify the story as we work through different iterations. So I thank them both very much and want to make sure I recognize their tremendous efforts in that. So I'm going to share my screen. And hopefully you are seeing the start of the FY21 Budget and Brief. You should see the map of the city of Lake Forest. And as I scroll through this, I'm actually going to have to change my view a bit, I'm going to just provide you some of the features that are included in the Story Builder. So here at the title, both of these provide active links. So a resident can click here to actually access the homepage of the city website, and they can click here to go into the city's website and actually pull up the FY21 Comprehensive Fiscal Plan if they want to see more detail or refer to the full document. And then as we scroll through the story, so Story Builder is really intended to present kind of panels that you can create and develop that essentially just walk through a particular story or message that you want to communicate. So you can see the next tile we've included, a brief message from the city manager, talking a little bit about the context within which the FY21 budget was developed. We then go to the next section of the Budget and Brief, and this, as Manager Wisha also noted in his introductory comments, this was a big goal for us in the FY21 Comprehensive Fiscal Plan, was to link the six priority goal areas of the strategic plan to the various components of the comprehensive fiscal plan. And so we created these six icons, one for each of the priority goal areas. And so we've just provided here the icon and a brief explanation of that priority goal area. We then moved to the city of Lake Forest overview. So we talked very briefly about the fact that we use fund accounting, which is often difficult for a resident to understand, but it does ensure that restricted revenues can be demonstrated as being used for their specific purpose. We also provide here the note that the city's fiscal year covers the period of May 1 to April 30, and we provide a summary of the total citywide budgeted revenues and expenses. Here's where we really start to see the great functionality of OpenGov work for us. So you see the pie chart on budgeted revenues, the total of $87.5 million. And you can actually scroll through these pie segments to see the percentage and amounts associated with each of the segments of the pie, do that both on the revenue and expense side. And you can actually launch from the story to the open portal on the city's website. So if you click that piece of the pie, this will take you into the Financial Transparency Data Portal of OpenGov and allow a user to go right in and start to see more information about the summary information presented in the story. In the next section, we turn our attention to the general fund. It is the only fund we've included in the Story Builder for the Budget and Brief, because it is the primary operating of the fund of the city, and it does include both unrestricted revenues as well as the majority of the city's personnel in that budget. So we have pie charts here that reflect general fund budgeted revenue in '21, general fund expenses by function or category, as well as general fund expenses by department. Again, these pies work similarly to the overall budget and allows the user to look at the different segments of pie, or again, launch into the open portal to see more specific data in OpenGov related to that information. We provide a very brief narrative below each of these charts to just single out some more highlight information related to the pie charts, revenue being the emphasis on which we rely on property taxes in the general fund budget at 56.3%. The fact that personnel expenses, salaries, and employee benefits represent nearly 75% of budgeted general fund expenses. And then when we look at the expenses by department, just highlight that public safety, fire, and police combined to be about 52% of the general fund budget. In the next sections, we see more influence on non-financial data or actual text that you can include in the story. So this section of the Budget and Brief highlights each individual department. So we start with the city manager's office. You can see the total expenses for the city manager's office in FY21 by category. We've included on the right the Fiscal Year '21 initiatives and programs included in the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan for the department. And again, with those strategic plan icons, highlighting those items that are specific to goal areas in the strategic plan. And then we include the mission statement and the vision statement for each department. So you can scroll through those, and again, drill down into the open portal if you want to see more information. After the department head, after the department summaries, we look at some general fund historical trends and actually see how general fund revenue expenses compare over the 10 years. So in this case, since we're comparing years of information, we've opted for a pie chart. But another nice function in this story is that people can select different graphical presentations as they go through the story, if they prefer to see it in a different fashion. They can hover over the different items, and they can see dollar amounts and percentage change over the prior year and have a very good overall view of how revenue and expense trends have changed in the general fund over the 10 years. Similar to the other charts, these tabs can be clicked on to launch into the OpenGov data portal. So there is revenue, and there is a similar comparison of expenses. Here, what we've done is include the general fund budget by department and that trend over 10 years. Moving away from the operating budget, we include just a little bit of information about the capital improvement plan. That's a very integral part of the budget development and part of the comprehensive fiscal plan. So we did want to include information in the Budget and Brief on that. This link here will allow a user to launch into a report that's available on the city's website. This provides the planet project detail for every capital project that has funding in FY21, so they can go directly from the Budget and Brief to that report on the city's website. And we also have the feature of galleries of photos. So here, we've just, for interest, included pictures of different projects that are included in the capital improvement plan for FY21. Continuing with the CIP, we note here that the five-year CIP totals $40.8 million, but the FY21 budget included just under $10 million in capital investment. This chart uses a slightly different look, but demonstrates by category the amount and gives a graphical presentation of its proportion to other categories for investments budgeted in FY21 by category. We then turn to a couple charts on personnel, noting specifically that the city personnel are the single most important asset of the city. And here we have a graph of full-time employees by department, so you can go through the staff count by department to see how many full-time positions are budgeted in each of the departments. And then the two larger departments, Park and Recreation and Public Works, are actually shown by division. And so as you go through the Park and Recreation, you can see how many positions are in senior versus cemetery, croia, forestry, parks, maintenance, and recreation, and the same segmented information is provided for Public Works. And then, as we do every year, talk about our employees per 100 households, we've, of course, included that chart that shows how sitting employee count per 100 households has changed since FY2000. And just include the narrative here that in gross numbers, the FY21 budget includes 209.75 full-time equivalent positions, which is actually an 18% decrease from the city's high of 257 full-time positions in fiscal year 2004. COVID-19 clearly was a significant impact on the city's FY21 budget. We've provided a little narrative here about what happened in March and April as we attempted to close out our budget development process. As you recall, we had our last operating budget workshop on March 12, and things significantly changed in the next week. So given the governor's stay-at-home order that was effective March 21, we all had to go back to work at the budget and develop some alternatives for the City Council Finance Committee to consider on April 20. We then took your direction, coming out of the April 20 meeting, to bring back revised preliminary proposed budget that was approved by the city council on May 4. We've also noted that you receive monthly update presentations on actual revenues and expenses compared to the budget forecast related to COVID-19. Here's another link. This will simply take a resident, a viewer, to the city's website page on the budget, pay plan, and personnel policies. There's several budget-related documents here that they can review, but most importantly, we do put the monthly update COVID-19 budget impact presentation up on this page each month, so a viewer can launch to this page and easily see the updated COVID-19 budget impact slides. As you know, we included some "We Are Here For You" Lake Forest Facebook messages on the city's Facebook page. You can click here to follow the city on Facebook, but this also uses the gallery view to just show some of the examples of the messages we've included over the last few months on the city's Facebook page. And finally, just to go beyond the numbers and beyond the budget, we do embed in here the Welcome Home video, and so a viewer can simply launch that and view the video from the Budget and Brief. We close again with the Lake Forest map and provide an additional link to the FY21 Comprehensive Fiscal Plan and offer some contact information for any questions related to the Budget and Brief. So that is our live demonstration. We will make this available, put this on the city's website this week with a little bit of a splash. I'll work with Susan Banks on that to make sure. I'll work with Susan Banks on that to make sure we get some messaging out on the Budget in Brief. And we look forward to rolling out more stories for you as the year progresses, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Elizabeth, this is Judd. I just wanted to say, you know, last meeting, we gave you that elite award from the Government Governmental Finance Officers Association for your work with your department and Diane. And this is just another example of why you get those awards. It's really remarkable and well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Well, and I'll just again emphasize to my appreciation to Elizabeth and her team for their efforts in putting this together again, you know, being able to visualize what can be dropped pretty dry information and really to allow users sort of the ability to explore areas of interest without having to comb through a 200-page document is just a tremendous asset for anyone who's interested in exploring the city's finances. So congratulations and well done. So moving on, Mayor, in my comments this evening, as some of you may have noted, one of the least early on impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic and more specifically our shift towards virtual meetings is that we haven't had as many community spotlights as we traditionally had in the past. And, you know, while there were, you know, early on perhaps some technological glitches to work through, really the truth is these spotlights are more critical than ever. I think many people know, not just here on the council, but throughout the community, the amount of creativity and community spirit that's been exhibited by a lot of our civic and nonprofit partners in the community has really been impressive. And, you know, as Kathy noted in her presentation a little earlier this evening, it's really more important than ever for us to help share that information and to provide a literal spotlight to these organizations when we have the opportunity to do so. So I'm pleased to have two of those community spotlights tonight, recognizing that these are virtual meetings and that there are, you know, possibilities for technical glitches. A lot of credit goes to these two organizations in developing two videos that were exceptionally well-done and kudos to all and they tell a great story. So I'm going to start first with Gordon Community Center and we're going to share that video with you. And then when we're done with that, the executive director, Amy Wagliardo, is here and is happy to answer any questions from the council. So with that, Joe, do you want to pull up the Gordon Community Center video?
Yes, sir. Amber's doing that right now.
Great.
Hi, I'm Amy Wagliardo, Executive Director of Gordon Community Center. We are in the business of, that is, our mission is to be the gathering place in the heart of the community. We have offered educational, informational and entertaining arts and cultural programming of all kinds for many years. We also house an early childhood learning center, nonprofit and artistic office space, and offer our space for your event all year round. Gordon has sat on the corner of McKinley in Illinois for nearly 120 years. So I guess you could say this isn't the first global pandemic this building has witnessed. When the shelter-in-place order came, we did what we have always done, paused for a second, then got busy creating new ways to connect for our community. Our classes went from in-person to online and our instructors became well-acquainted with Zoom and Facebook Live. Without missing a beat, we put together a calendar full of events with classes, art, music and film. More than creating a schedule, we created a light when our community needed a lighthouse. We made signs of encouragement for our fence to thank and encourage our community. We made lawn signs when our community asked to be part of our mission. We collected food for those who need it and we're writing a quarantine cookbook full of the recipes we found while spending all that time in our kitchens. Four months later, we're now in phase four, which means we can gather cautiously and with safety standards in place. Many of our events have moved outside while the weather permits with drive-in movies, storytelling, music, educational and fitness classes. Inside, we sanitize, 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 have Plexiglas and controlled traffic routes to minimize contact. We have blocked off rows in our theater and appropriately spaced out our meeting rooms for physical distance. Our concessions are sealed in one use. We're all in this together. Even our youngest customers know the importance of wearing a mask. Our children's drop-in learning center is once again filled with imagination, fun and learning, albeit with many changes. Snack time is now in hula hoops to provide a literal space bubble and reservations and temperature checks are the new normal here. Although things may look very different in the world and in our little corner of the world, some things not even a global pandemic can change. We're bringing our community together in new and innovative ways as we move through this time. We remain the gathering place in the heart of our community where people connect, converse, learn, listen, play and perform. And if you haven't already, we welcome you to join us.
Great. Well, again, to Amy and her team exceptionally well-done on that video. And so as I mentioned, Amy is here with us. So for Mayor or any members of the city council, if you have any questions or comments, I'm sure she'd be happy to take them.
I just wanted to thank Amy and her team as a very frequent visitor of Gordon. I was cute to see my youngest son Edward in the video there at the end. We have truly enjoyed summer camp and look forward to the new community helpers camp that I'm happy to be a part of later in the month.
Amy, it's Judd. You know, a transition like this is unbelievable. You think about where you were back in March and not knowing how you were going to come out the other side and the creativity and the energy that has gone into all of this is pretty impressive and what a great asset for the community. So well done.
I just have a question and again, you know, Gordon's always been an impressive place and a community gathering spot and we are so blessed to have it. But can you maybe speculate a little bit as to how this pandemic has affected your financial position in the past several months? Do you have any sense of that?
Sure. Well, we started the year very strong. We had a very strong January and February, which helped us get through a few months without too much, without being scathed too much. We got a PPP loan, which helped us get through a few more months. We have an endowment, which will be taking the endowment draw this year. We also have a line of credit that we could fall back on. So we have, we're in good financial position to weather the storm. It, I mean, it is, it is, you know, financially devastating to many of our businesses in town and nonprofits. I mean, all of our, pretty much all of our program revenue went away for four months. So that's obviously going to have an impact on our bottom line, but we have had a number of generous donations during this time. And, and like I said, I feel like we were in a stronger financial position than some to go in, to head into this. So we're, we're watching our budget carefully and our cash flow and doing our best to, you know, make good decisions about weathering to the other side of this. And so that's, hopefully that answers your question. Thank you.
Great. Well, Amy, thank you so much for, again, for providing that video and for being here tonight and keep up the great work.
Another one of our community treasures that is having to make radical adjustments, but thankfully they're set up to weather the storm in a way that they were not in the last recession, if anybody remembers. So thanks to all in the community who have, who have made Gordon so resilient. And thank you, Amy, for being resilient and your staff as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. So next we have a video from Lake Forest Open Lands. And so we'll pull that up and then upon completion of the video, President of Lake Forest Open Lands, John Centel, is with us tonight. And similar to the exercise we just went through, he's happy to answer any questions if you have them after the video.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, our city manager and staff, and many friends from the community watching this evening. I'm John Centel and it's my privilege to serve as president of Lake Forest Open Lands and to represent our Board of Governors and the many members throughout the community who support our organization. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about Lake Forest Open Lands, the important benefits our nature preserves provide to the city's residents, an update on the future Gene and John Green Nature Preserve at McCormick Ravine, and our plans to maintain a unique family tradition that our community shares every fall, our bagpipes and bonfire celebration, notwithstanding the constraints of Restore Illinois Guidelines, of course. Today, more than ever, we understand the importance of making access to nature convenient for everyone. During these recent months, when the ability to get out and about has been severely constrained, many people have rediscovered the powerful benefits of being connected to nature. Lake Forest Open Lands takes a great deal of pride in continuing to provide and maintain outdoor areas in which we can all recreate and recuperate, even if just getting out of the house for some much-needed fresh air. We've adapted our ongoing education and public programs, including the Center for Conservation Leadership, to continue to provide knowledge and new experiences for people, young and old, from all backgrounds and communities, by providing guided access to nature and engaging all in activities that create a meaningful and lifelong connection to the environment. We're aware of the value of the natural areas we've preserved and how they continue to positively impact water quality, biodiversity, stormwater management, beauty and aesthetics. But now we understand and are experiencing the importance of getting outside for better mental and physical health and wellness. As our social distancing signs say in the preserves, "When all else fails, you've got trails." As the mayor recently said during the Chamber of Commerce's luncheon call, "There are three S's: space, safety and schools that drive our quality of life and help make our community a great place to live." And outdoor space is what Lake Forest Open Lands is all about. Over the span of 50-plus years, we've saved numerous irreplaceable pieces of environmentally significant land from development. We've preserved over 800 acres of native habitat that we can all enjoy and experience. Our six soon-to-be-eight public nature preserves are unequaled in our area for their size, their ease of access, diverse habitat quality and availability. As we learned from the survey recently conducted for the council's new sustainability committee, our natural environment and its connection to our community is greatly appreciated by residents. Our open spaces and wild places are an increasingly important resource that differentiates our community, enhances our quality of life and adds to the value of living here. Of course, the future Gene and John Green Nature Preserve at McCormick Ravine promises to be another place where people will experience a truly unique connection with nature. We received many questions on McCormick, most notably, "When will it open?" And I want to bring you up to speed on our progress. McCormick is recognized beyond our borders for its exceptional natural qualities and historical significance. Restoring nature preserves is a big investment and as such, we're being judicious and careful in our planning. For some quick history, in 2015, Lake Forest Open Lands reached an agreement with the city of Lake Forest to provide nearly 4 million of funding to permanently preserve and restore McCormick with the help of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. As a construction zone since 2015, McCormick has remained closed to the public. Since then, the majority of restoration work has been completed and the property officially transferred to Lake Forest Open Lands' ownership in 2019. We're proud that no local tax dollars were used nor will ever be used for the restoration, enhancement or the perpetual maintenance of this property. McCormick will need to remain closed, however, while we and the Army Corps continue to complete restoration work, construction work, tree removal and habitat management. This work also includes the upcoming construction of a preserve infrastructure, including trail systems, safe not only for all people, but for the fragile ecology of the ravine itself. The project also incorporates enhanced parking and new pedestrian access from Sheridan Road. While the entrance to McCormick looks much the same as it did back in 2015, with the guidance of a nationally renowned team of designers and engineers, we've created a plan that highlights the ecological significance and beauty of McCormick. So when you walk, ride or drive off in off Sheridan Road, your transition to someplace special will be immediate. When we're done, McCormick Ravine will be more accessible and inclusive than ever before. We recognize that everyone's anxious to re-explore McCormick and would like to know when McCormick will reopen to the public. A lot of this is outside of our control. We submitted our permit application to the Army Corps back in February of 2020 for the next phase. Like so many others, the Army Corps' normal business processes have been disrupted and they continue to review our plans. Contractor availability and weather conditions will determine how quickly we can move forward. So it's going to be a while before McCormick is open to the public, but we're pushing hard. Recently, we've had a number of people hopping the gate and fence to get a glimpse of McCormick to remind people of the construction conditions and to avoid further issue with the Army Corps contractors. We've put up some extra signage about the site's closure and safety concerns. We'll certainly keep everyone posted and ask people to please keep an eye on our website for updates on the construction and design progress. Last November, staff hosted a special hike day in the ravine for the public and we hope to do this again when COVID guidelines permit. We appreciate the supportive and understanding community for this project. We're working hard and are confident. We'll all be very pleased with the result. We're working hard and are confident we'll all be very pleased with the results. We're fortunate to have so many other nature preserves for our community to explore, such as Skokie River, Melody, and Everett Farm Nature Preserves. This includes the very popular Middle Fork Farm Nature Preserve overlooking the unique Middle Fork Savannah, a special place with old-growth oaks and hickories, lovely tall grass savanna, and breathtaking vises that are unmatched. The establishment of these preserves over the years, as well as our ongoing preservation, conservation, and maintenance operations, have all been accomplished without any local tax support and entirely through the individual memberships, donations, grants, and broad-based network of volunteers, and of course, our annual Bagpipes and Bonfire event. When the shadows start to lengthen early and we feel autumn's chill in the air, we all look forward to Bagpipes and Bonfire, a joyful fall celebration of our community, our families, and the heritage of our beautiful open spaces. This event is also the primary fundraiser for Lake Forest Open Lands, and its proceeds support the work of our conservation mission. We've kept the preserves open and continue to maintain them through the past few months, and we are committed to keep Open Lands' fire burning again this fall in the hearts of our community, if not in person. To do so in the circumstances we currently face, we're introducing some significant changes to this annual event that will keep our bagpipes tradition strong and make it available to as many people as possible while engaging the community responsibly. To keep the fire burning safely, we want to extend the bagpipe spirit throughout our community and allow people to take that spirit home with them while complying with Restore Illinois Phase Four Guidelines. To that end, supporters are invited to the Melody Farm Nature Preserve on Saturday evening, September 19th, to hear bagpipers playing, sample a selection of Scotch whisky's, have a family portrait taken, and pick up a pre-ordered dinner to enjoy at home in the bagpipes and bonfire spirit. Grand Tartan patrons can have the special feast delivered to their homes by a bagpiper. Specific details are available on our website. In addition, while we all won't congregate at Middle Fork this year, pipers will play Amazing Grace simultaneously at various locations throughout Lake Forest on Saturday evening, creating a truly magical, mystical moment to bring our community together in a time when we need this camaraderie. We'll notify community members as to the locations of the pipers so they can walk out the door of their homes to participate and enjoy the majesty of the moment. The pipers will march, the sun will set, the bonfire will be lit, albeit remotely. Our hope is that the entire community feels the spirit and bond with nature that is uniquely Lake Forest, and we all enjoy and have a moment to feel connected and appreciate our natural history and outdoors. We want everyone to take pride and have a touch of this gathering that brings our community together. We thank the city for all their support of such a truly unique community tradition. And a special thank you to Mike Strong and Kim McCann, who have been particularly helpful as we plan our changes. We hope everyone will participate and help Lake Forest Open Lands keep the fire burning and provide support that is essential to help us keep our nature preserves healthy and open for all. Thank you for your time this evening, and I hope to see you all down the trail soon.
Great. Thank you very much, John. I'll say you and Amy have both set the bar pretty high on these videos. So good luck to the entities that follow you. But as, as noted before we started the video, John is here with us tonight. So if there's any members of the council who have any questions or comments, now is your opportunity.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everybody live, although still remote. So it's nice to see everyone's faces, though.
John, I do have a comment to add to what you said. Wonderful presentation and certainly looking forward to McCormick. But we all are very familiar with the health aspects, the medical impact of COVID-19. And one thing I think we still haven't fully appreciated, appreciate yet, is the mental impact from the stress, the strain, the disruption, the isolation that's going on throughout, you know, all the generations of the populace. And it's dealing with that, that I look upon Open Lands as providing the think outside, the explorer outdoors, the opportunity to experience and enjoy nature, being so much of a great treatment for that medical impact, for that mental impact that we have here. So in a way, I should call you Dr. Centel, a medical doctor besides the... But thank you very much for what you're offering us. And I do hope everyone takes advantage of the opportunity to enjoy and experience nature, the over 800 acres that they've provided to our wonderful city. And again, thank you very much, and hopefully you have a very successful modified Bagpipes and Bonfire program.
Thanks, Alderman, Bushman. Greatly appreciate your comments and couldn't agree more, but thank you very much. Happy to answer any other questions people might have about McCormick or Bagpipes or anything else, Lake Forest Open Lands.
John, Ted Notes, just wanted to share, thrilled to hear that you're coming up with what sounds like a wonderful solution to Bagpipes this fall.
Thanks, Alderman. We're really hoping that, one of the key things this year is we want the, the community to really embrace this, this uniquely Lake Forest event. And it's really an invitation for everybody to enjoy Open Lands and enjoy this event. We think it's really a stepping stone to sort of a reimagined broader community event going forward. So we're very appreciative, for example, of the resolution earlier tonight approved, which will, will actually help Lake Forest Open Lands to promote this event and get more people involved. So, thank you.
Well, I'd like to just maybe close the conversation by reiterating something I said before, and I've said many times, you know, Lake Forest is a city of many treasures, and Open Lands is right up there. It's hard to rank them, but it's quite a gift. And the organization, the community outreach, and the simple preservation of all this space and providing public access to it has been, we see the value of it now. We know, you don't, we don't, we take it for granted. We don't always see it in our day-to-day lives. And then something like this comes along, and it really brings it to the fore. What other community in all of Metro Chicago can, can say that they have 800 acres of preserved open space within their community as part of the city? It's not, this isn't the county, this isn't the state, this isn't a state park, this is ours. And so thank you, thank you, John, for your vision and to all the people who have had such a, such a glorious vision for such a long time now. It's, I think it's, I don't know how many years Open Lands has been in existence, but it's been, I don't know, 40 or 50 years now. And what a contribution to the community.
Yeah, we've been, we've been here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been here since 1967. And I always like to credit the vision of the founders who first foresaw. Maybe they didn't envision a pandemic and things such as that, but they certainly saw the importance of preserving these places. So we're forever grateful for, for their vision. Thank you.
And John mentioned, one other thing that I'm aware of, not just with respect to Open Lands, but a number of other organizations in and around town who historically have held events here. Mike Strong and, and Kim McCann have been extraordinarily involved and dedicated and creative and supportive and flexible in coming up with ways for some of these events to, to happen. It's not quite like they were, but it's at least something, and it's all conforming and complying to, to the rules and regulations we're living with. They have done yeoman duty in helping bring some of these activities back to our, to our, you know, to our community. So thanks to them, and Jason, you know, thanks for your leadership and encouraging them to be as creative and flexible as they've been.
Full credit to the staff, no question. They've done a tremendous job. Well, if there are no other questions, then that would conclude my report for this evening, Mayor.
To make sure I'm not muted. Okay. Next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the city council. We'll give a few minutes of time here. The number is 847-810-3643. All this information, by the way, about calling in was shared on the agenda that was published at City Hall and on the website. So we'll wait here for a minute while Amber collects any input from any callers.
Good evening, everyone. There are no callers.
Thank you, Amber.
Mayor, may I just make a comment? The staff is to be complimented on these Zoom meetings. It's come to my attention that not all public meetings are able to offer this immediate resident participation. And I'm able to do it at the Environmental Sustainability Committee meetings. We're able to do it here. At a lot of public meetings during this COVID outbreak, you have to register in advance to speak to the governing body. You have to submit questions in advance. So just congratulations and kudos to the transparency and the opportunity for public participation that has been made possible through the staff. So I want to thank the staff for really serving this community, doing a tremendous service during this period. Thank you.
If I may piggyback on that, yes, I do think our experience has been that, although I know in the environmental sustainability in your first meeting, you had something like 40 people commenting. But it does make public comment more difficult. And I am personally aware in my business of at least one community that, where you have some, some leadership that is trying to push through some very unpopular things, which I think will have long and very negative impacts on the community. And they are clearly doing it under the cover of darkness. Using these Zoom meetings, they literally went so far as to push all public comment to the very end of the meetings, which is sometimes 11 or 12 o'clock at night, just abhorrent behavior. And I think, I think this is the exact opposite of that. I only wish that people were a little more comfortable with Zoom and a little more comfortable with calling in. It isn't, it does make it a lot more difficult, and there's no substitute. We think that these public meetings are somewhat archaic, but the fact of the matter is there's nothing simpler than getting in your car and driving down to City Hall and walking into the city council meeting and saying your piece. And so unfortunately, we've lost a little bit of that, and we're going to have to find a way to get it back. The next item on the agenda is a report from the Pension Subcommittee. We'll be approving a pension subcommittee recommendation to revise the city's pension funding policy to reduce the interest rate assumption, the assumed rate of return assumption from 6.75% to 6.5% for the city's police and fire plan. Alderman Morris, Chairman of the Finance Committee and Chairman of the Pension Subcommittee, will make a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn this over to Director Hollab in a second. But I just wanted to comment, as we noted last month and we had our previous session, this is an important change that the Subcommittee has been considering for some time because the pension challenge that we face is daunting. The community may not realize how significant it is, but as we've learned over the years, we've hired the actuary consulting firm to do the modeling on our pension contributions. And at one point, we're at assumed rate of return of 7%, and the model said we needed to reduce it, and we did, to 6.75. And now, once again, especially in the face of the uncertain financial times for the state and the community and the markets in general, we feel it's appropriate to reduce it again to 6.5%. That's going to raise our annual contribution to both funds. But as we know, the last time, there's $1 million of surplus that we're allocating to $500,000 each fund to take the, the pain out of that increased contribution this year. And then in 2022, in the summer of 2022, we turn over our financial management to the state. And at that point, maybe in the end of 2022, we'll know whether the state's able to produce a better return for our pension funds or not, and we can make adjustments at that point. But this is an important, important change for the interim. And we can review this continuously as we move through this period till 2022. So Director Hollab, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you very much, Chairman Morris. Amber is going to bring up a slide deck for you. So as indicated by Chairman Morris, this is really memorializing a recommendation that was presented to you at your last meeting, July 20, and actually amend the city's pension funding policy to reduce the interest rate assumption again from 6 and 3/4 to 6.5%. So the next slide just summarizes, it provides a lot of financial data, just really comparing the police and fire plans' valuation date at 4/30/19 and valuation date at 4/30/20. You can see in red the indicated change in the assumed rate of return. And you can also see below that the, the one-year return, the five-year average, and the seven-year average for both plans, falling well short of the current assumption of 6.75%. As Chairman Morris noted, you can see in the bottom two rows both the dollar amount and the percentage increase in the employer contribution. As a result of the recently updated actuarial evaluations, these numbers will appear in your tax levy schedules when you begin talking about those later this year in a few months in, in making some decisions and direction on the 2020 property tax levy. Now, as noted, that dollar change for both reflects the reduced rate of return assumption to 6.5%. Combined between the two funds, that change from 6.75 to 6.5 increased the dollar change in employer contribution by a combined 373,000. So we're looking at about 250,000 combined and now looking about 628,000 combined. But Chairman Norris, Morris noted last, at your last meeting, you did approve transfers of $500,000 to both the police and fire pension funds, and those transfers have been made in accordance with your direction. So that, on the next slide, Amber, you really see just the budget, budgeted revenue for FY '20 compared to budget, the actual revenue compared to budget for both the fire and police pension. You can see the shortfall, fire pension compared to the assumed return was about 1.5 million and about 2 million short of assumed returns in police. So that $500,000 transfer made to both of those offset some of that shortfall in investment experience for FY '20. On the next slide, you see the historical investment returns for each year. Fire in red, police in blue, and you can see how those vary significantly from year to year. There is a linear line on, on that chart that may not show up very well for you on the screen. But the linear trend for fire is about 6%, and the linear trend for police is about 5%. And the table below that chart provides you the one-year, three-year, five-year, 10-year, and 15-year average actual return for both of the plans. The next slide. Last year, when the city council approved a change from 7% to 6.75%, we provided you this comparable data. This is just a repeat of the information we presented last year. We worked on trying to get some updated numbers today with some difficulty because of people being out of the office and did speak with Foster &amp; Foster, the, the city's independent actuary. and did speak with Foster and Foster, the, the city's independent actuary for police and fire. And they indicated that there are really three factors going into this right now on many, for many communities. One is the consolidation that Chairman Morris mentioned, that being a transfer of all assets to a statewide board that will manage the investments for all local police and fire pension funds across the state. The potential legislation of changing the amortization period. Right now, statutory amortization period requires ninety percent funding by 2040. There will be bills introduced, as there have been in recent years, to extend that amortization period. And that will result in reductions in employer contributions, but as the pension subcommittee discusses at every meeting and has communicated in their recommendations, that is simply pushing the can down the road and will really ultimately result in much higher costs over time to those pension plans. And the final being poor returns this year. So a lot of April 30 communities are faced with the very low returns that we have seen in our police and fire pension plans. And so it makes it difficult for them to reduce their interest rate assumption because they're already increasing contribution requirements to offset the low returns for the current year. So overall, though, I would just mention that even based on last year's data, there are six of these comparable communities that do use an investment rate of return that is either six and a quarter or six and a half percent, with six and a half percent being the recommendation of the pension subcommittee. The next chart, this really does not relate to your pension funding policy, but I thought it was important to update everyone. Your pension funding policy does call for a phasing in of an open amortization period. That concept is a rolling fifteen-year rather than the fixed-year amortization period set forth in state statutes. And so last year, we provided a modeler to the council to demonstrate when we thought that crossover point would occur and the funding requirement for the open amortization period is equal to or less than the contribution required under the current funding formula. So in the modeler we looked at last year at FY nineteen, four thirty nineteen, the difference between the two models was about six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, and this is for the police pension fund. And the modeler last year projected a difference for FY twenty, four thirty twenty, of about six hundred and twenty-seven thousand with the plan that that, that difference will close and become smaller every year. And then when there's a crossover point, you can switch the open amortization. The good news is that even with all, all of the factors going into the actuarial evaluations at four thirty twenty, today, based on current actuarial evaluation results, the difference between the two models is only six hundred and eighteen thousand, slightly better than what we projected last year, even despite the low investment return. So that is actually good news. You're still on track for phasing that in on schedule. So finally, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. But again, the recommendation of the pension subcommittee is to approve modifications to the pension funding policy to reduce the interest rate assumption from six and three quarters to six and a half percent.
Questions for Elizabeth?
Mayor, this is Jed. I just want to thank the council for their support in this process. It's a complicated discussion with lots of variables and we appreciate their patience and willingness to hear this through and make the right decisions. So thank you.
I do have, thank you. I do have two questions, actually. In terms of the data, the financial data, we were using an April thirtieth, 2020 end date for looking at the statistics. We've obviously, obviously had a significant change in the market in the three months since. Just looking at the S and P 500, we've had a growth of almost sixteen percent in, in the market valuation from a stock standpoint, S and P 500. I recognize the, the bond side, the thirty-five percent is still very low, slightly above zero. But is that something, this recent market turnaround and no one knows where the market's going to be over the next three months? Is that something we should take into account now in reconsidering this reduction? And the reason I'm raising it too, in trying to understand the impact of going from six point seven five to six point five. I did talk to Director Hollab today to try and quantify that. And we did come up with some numbers that it would be about two hundred thousand dollars additional funding for police and about a hundred and seventy thousand for fire, so a total of about three hundred and seventy thousand. And I think we all need to be sensitive to where that money's going to come from. And you know, the typical way of dealing with funding for pensions is through the property tax and that would turn out to be about a one point one percent or over one percent increase in property tax across the board for the Lake Foresters. You did mention in your comments, Alderman Morris, the fact that we did allocate that five hundred thousand contribution. And I thought I might have misread or read too much into what you said. Are you saying that, that we would not be looking for additional funding at this time from making this actuarial change because of the contribution or did I misinterpret something there?
Well, those are great questions, Ray, and I appreciate you bringing them to our attention. No, it doesn't reduce our contribution. What it does is it puts money in that will earn interest or returns down the road that'll build over time. So over time is where you'll see the, the end result of that. But to your point about the current market, which is, you're right, it's been pretty impressive, I guess, for, for everybody who's been watching it. But if you look at the fifteen-year return, across fifteen years and all those market variations, the rate of return is still below where we're recommending. So yeah, it's probably something we need to pay attention to, but I think we need to wait until we see the state take this over. It's just difficult to say that we could reasonably justify keeping the higher rate of return when it just hasn't been there over a long period of time. So Director Hollab, maybe you want to add to that?
I would just add, and yes, Alderman Bushman, I did talk about it in detail this morning, is that when you do begin to talk about the tax levy in October and November, you will have a much better idea of several months of experience. We only have investment data for the police and fire pension plans as of June thirtieth. And they both did have two, two-month returns of over four percent in May and June. And we would hope that would continue. But I think that when you, when you do have the discussions about the levy in the fall, you'll have more experience in the, in the pension fund investment experience for a few months. We'll also know better about the presidential election because honestly, that could have a significant impact on the market as well. As Alderman Bushman noted, thirty-five percent of the assets in both of these plans must be invested in fixed income. So they will drag down the returns because we can only invest in equities at sixty-five percent of the total planned asset. So there's a lot of factors going into it. Again, you did make the additional contributions at the end of July of five hundred thousand dollars and, and I think that can go into the conversation as well. So much to, much more data to come and certainly more discussion when we get to the levy in the fall. But I, I think all of those are very valid questions and factors that may go into the discussion of the levy.
And I take it in the October timeframe, we won't have any better idea what financial benefit may come from this, the new law on consolidating the pension funds for public safety. Do you think we're going to get much insight on that or is that time, is something that time's going to tell in the longer term?
Yeah, very difficult to project those returns, as has been noted several times by the pension subcommittee. The nice thing about that consolidation is that they will have much more ability to invest in equity and other types of investments that local pension plans cannot do that now. So difficult to predict, but certainly both from a reduction of investment management expense by consolidating these funds as well as a change in the makeup of the investments and how they're allocated should prove to be beneficial to all the plans in the state.
Okay, yeah, I really appreciate us continuing to look at this because we need, do need to keep in mind there is a negative impact to our taxpayer in doing this. Now hopefully, it's a long-term benefit more than offset by having a financially sound pension program. But there are, there is the other side and I do encourage everyone to be sensitive to that. Thank you.
That's a great point.
Other questions or comments? I'd like to make a couple of comments. Number one, many of you may not know or, or remember, but our finance director, Elizabeth Hollab, is on the transition board at the state level for the police plan. Is that correct, Elizabeth? Is it the police or fire? I can't remember which one.
It's the police.
Yeah, so we're dealing here with a person who is deeply involved and knowledgeable about this whole subject and has been an enormous contributor to our, our well-being on this issue as a community. It does cost money and what happens is, you know, if we do this, if we vote to do this tonight, it will cost us more money in the short run. In the long run, if we whistle past the graveyard and continue to have a, an assumed rate of return that is higher than what is practically likely or possible in some cases, what happens is, you know, there's a crowding out factor here and Ray, you point this out. I don't know that it's going to directly lead to an increase in property taxes that would be any different or otherwise do, but it crowds out other expenditures. There's no question about it. It takes money away from staff, it takes, you know, from staffing, it takes money away from capital. It diverts those dollars from one use to another. As you know, in our budget process, we look at the totality of it and we try to keep it in toto within a pretty tight range of a percentage point or two growth each year or less. So it's not about raising taxes to do this, it's about crowding out other expenditures. And, and that's really driven by, frankly, by the benefit side of the equation. And that's going to continue to be a problem in Illinois until, until some dramatic changes are made at the state level. But in the meantime, we owe it to our taxpayers to maximize the value of the compounding. I think making the, the contribution to the plans that we did last month is enormously important because what that does is it gets that money in the system and it gets that money generating that six and a half percent compound return over a long period of time. And the sooner you do that, the less you end up spending in the long run. So it's, but it's, it's, it's a, it's, you're sort of between the devil and the deep blue sea here. And if we don't, if we don't deal with it straight up and, and, and if we fall for the temptation of maintaining an artificially high interest or, you know, assumed rate of return, over time, we have compounding working against us instead of in favor, in our favor. And so I, I'm very strongly in favor of this move. And the pain of it in the short run is definitely lessened by the fact that we've been able to apply this, this surplus to at least the first year.
Thank you.
So if there are no other comments, I would call for a motion to approve the pension subcommittee recommendation to revise the city's pension funding policy to reduce the interest rate assumption from six point seven five percent to six point five percent for the police and fire pension plans.
Some of.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rommel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Press Slack. Alderman Gashgarian. Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi.
Alderman Gashgarian, can I hear your vote?
Hi.
Thank you. Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And thanks for, Jed, for your able leadership in this pretty technical and complex area of finance.
I think we're doing pretty well as a city council, so, so far, so good.
Next item is, next committee report is a report from the Environmental Sustainability Committee. The report is on a resolution for community solar clearinghouse or a community solar clearinghouse solution program. And Alderman Rommel, the chairman of the Environmental Sustainability Committee, will make a brief presentation.
Well, thank you very much.
The resolution for this is in the omnibus.
Right. The Environmental Sustainability Committee has now had two meetings and we are already before you with our first recommendation. I just want to tell you a little bit about what the committee has been up to. Many of you know that we sent out a community-wide survey. Mist Environment helped us with that. We had a tremendous response rate. It was basically a general survey of how do you feel the community is doing on environmental sustainability across the board? What types of initiatives might you want to see? And that was all compiled. So we have been very inclusive in our process. As the mayor alluded to, our first meeting had forty-eight remote attendees, which I think was a nice record and a nice start to this. We have some great input during our meetings from the community. We have some organizations that we seem to have a special interest in this area. If I start to name a few, I may forget some, but it includes green mines and open lands and various garden clubs and individuals and the League of Women Voters. So we've had some real partners in this endeavor so far, I'm proud to say. We are now on our second survey, which is a little more circumspect. It's gone out to some of those interested parties and the members of our committee and interested city staff to try and develop some criteria by which to judge some of the initiatives that we might want to see move forward. As I was talking to Assistant City Manager Strong today, otherwise, it's kind of like whack-a-mole. You go from, you know, one initiative and then, no, we want to start with this initiative. So we have to develop some criteria by which we're going to assess which initiatives we want to proceed forward with and in what type of timeline. And that's what we've been working on. We're hoping to have some of this finished by sometime in September and be able to really begin to set our priorities and move forward with some initiatives. Again, I've always said, I think there are sort of two silos to what we're looking at. Some of them are initiatives that will impact our residents directly in terms of some of the actions that we all take to help in sustainability endeavors, such as how do we recycle? And the other silo I see is how does the city maybe change some of its policies with regard to planning and with regard possibly to public works projects? So we have a lot of work to do yet, but we're moving forward. We have our third committee meeting on August nineteenth at six thirty. And again, I encourage the community and interested people to tune in and participate in our meeting. But tonight, we are before, before you with our, basically a community solar aggregation program. The city has been participating in this program as a, with our municipal services for a while. And now we're able to offer this same program to individual residents, which will result in savings on your, your electric bill if you participate in this program. So it's, it's basically a win-win as we're looking at it. You save money and you're helping the environment by using solar energy. And so we're very pleased to offer this initiative. And I'm going to turn this over now to Assistant City Manager Mike Strong to explain this initiative a little further.
Thank you, Alderman Rommel. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I will just provide some brief background. I just have a couple of slides here and as was mentioned, included in your packet. I will just provide some brief background. I just have a couple of slides here and as was mentioned, included in your packet in, on beginning on page forty one is, is a resolution that formalizes our, our participation in this program. But that said, since 2011, you know, we've really been discussing renewable energy in a variety of forums. We've been a founding member, member of the North Shore Electricity Aggregation Consortium, which is a consortium of communities around the North Shore that seeks to explore renewable energy programs. We've recognized renewable energy and various long range planning documents. We've hosted educational forums, engagement sessions on the topic and have received a bronze level certification in the Soul Smart Program. So it really has been a topic of discussion in various formats. You may recall in, in July, last July, July of twenty nineteen, we participated in a program sponsored by the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus to access community solar benefits for various municipal facilities. The initiative offers access to subscribe to community solar assets or invest in solar development without the need to build, pay, install panels on facilities. In return, the city has offered a credit for those subscriptions that reduces the net costs of electricity supply for those facilities. So as was alluded to, this is really a cost savings opportunity, but more importantly, an opportunity to promote solar development in northern Illinois. And so the resolution included in your packet outlines the, the program and action that's requested this evening as recommended by the environmental sustainability committee is to approve that resolution supporting this opportunity for residents. So to start, I thought I would just provide some brief background on really what this concept of community solar is for those that may be tuning in at home or for Alderman that may not be familiar. So on the slide here that's shown, we have these community solar farms or resources that are producing solar energy. And these are large scale solar facilities that have various panels available to supply energy to the local grid. As you may know, the local grid, that is the power supply that's coming to your homes and your properties is actually blended energy. So it is inclusive of solar energy, wind energy, coal, nuclear. There's a variety of sources that that energy comes from. If you can think about the energy grid as a pool of water that our properties drink from, what community solar does is it produces more solar energy to put into that grid. So thereby creating a cleaner lake or, or grid that we can all take from or use from. And so it's, it's an opportunity to increase ComEd's renewable energy portfolio standards, which is the amount of green energy in their grid from roughly twelve percent today to about twenty five percent, which is what their goal is by twenty thirty five. So we're really excited about the potential here of increasing the green energy that's inside of the grid. And so that energy that's supplied, we can then offer subscriptions to those community solar farms. And we have subscribed to a facility in Elgin, Illinois. But there are about seventy four other facilities, community solar farms that are under construction right now. And right now those facilities are looking for subscribers to support their investment, to provide them equity, to support their, their development. And in exchange for that subscription, ComEd is offering on bill credits on a one to one basis for every kilowatt hour that is subscribed to a community solar farm. And that bill credit is what we result in a net decrease to the cost of energy for the subscriber. So this is a simple alternative to, to an individual or a property owner or business that may really want to promote solar energy, but may not have the ability to install or invest in infrastructure on their property. Navigating subscriptions can be really complex, especially when this process is very new in the state of Illinois. And so the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus managed a solicitation to pool or to aggregate various municipal accounts to help simplify that subscription process for members. So back in twenty nineteen, they solicited twelve firms. These are solar developers, community developers. Six of them submitted responsive bids for the program and based on the winning bid of that solicitation, they were able to secure essentially a net twenty percent discount on the ComEd default rate for every subscription that's, that's entered into with that, with that facility. In addition, their evergreen clause, there's no termination costs or no fees. They're able to terminate within thirty days penalty free. And there's no upfront costs to subscribe to the facilities. And so I, I, I just want to underscore that, you know, there is really low, there's low risk here with these subscriptions with the community solar subscription that the mayor's caucus has, has enabled. But has offered some great financial benefits to, to the consumers and those that, that participate. So with the expansion of that, and Amber, if we go to the next slide, please. I thought I'd share what the value of this might be. So what it means for maybe a typical Lake Forest resident. So these numbers on the slide are really for demonstrated purposes, but so you're aware, a typical household in Lake Forest consumes about twelve thousand kilowatt hours annually. And the bill rate that ComEd is offering is about five and a half cents. And that means that based on, you know, twenty percent savings, that could result in about a hundred and thirty two years, thirty two dollars per year. If a subscriber or a resident in this case is able to subscribe a hundred percent of their, of their supply contract. So you may recall like with municipal aggregation where you're entering into an agreement with an alternate energy supply contractor. A community solar subscription would allow you to subscribe the energy you use to the, to a third party, to this community solar farm. And what ends up happening is that developer essentially would net bill credit you only eighty percent of the supply costs that you'd have because of this twenty percent savings. So, you know, while this may not be considered a windfall, when we're, we're talking about saving money and promoting community solar, as, as Alderman Rommel stated, it's, it's really viewed as a, as a win-win and something that I think forwards not only some of the sustainability goals, but I think there's a lot of interest in the community that community solar has, especially for residents that don't maybe have the ability to invest in the infrastructure within their property. So as stated this evening, we have included a resolution that would formally endorse the city's participation of expanding this program for residents. If approved this evening, we will work closely with the mayor's caucus to begin a communication and marketing campaign, which would include a direct mail campaign, a website portal to the city so that residents can log in and enroll. Subscriptions, right now we have access to about fifty megawatts. And so we, we know not every resident may be able to benefit at this point in time, but as more facilities come online and more community solar opportunities become available, those on the waiting list will be provided that opportunity when, when those become available. So we have six other communities in the consortium that are bringing a similar resolution to their respective governing bodies. And we anticipate that the consortium will be united on this, on this program. And, you know, while assets are still being built out to subscribe to, we think by the end of November or, you know, early winter, we may see our first credits available and subscriptions available to actually see some benefits on, on bills. So in light of everything going on around us, this is a great opportunity to promote some cost savings and, and the promotion of renewable energy opportunities in, in Lake Forest. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, but as stated previously, there is a resolution included on the omnibus agenda. And I'd be happy to stick around or answer any questions we may have.
Questions for Mike?
Mike, you mentioned a direct mail piece, perhaps maybe tying that in with the fall dialogue.
Thank you for mentioning that. We did, we have drafted an article to be, to be included in the dialogue. So that would certainly be an effort for us as well. Thank you.
Other questions? It's nice to see the Environmental Sustainability Committee starting to produce actual output so quickly. That's a credit to, to Melanie and and the rest of the members of the committee for focusing on attainable actual beneficial recommendations quickly. So thank you for that. That's great. And I think it's a good prototype for future prioritization. So and glad that there's been so much community interest and input. We, we knew it was out there. They didn't really have a place to focus. And that was the whole idea behind this committee. So I'm glad that that all seems to be clicking. And again, thank you, Alderman Rommel for devoting so much energy and passion to this. So.
You're quite welcome. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. I will now read the eleven omnibus items. The first is approving the extension of the mayor's declaration of a local state of emergency until the next city council meeting. This is a, something we have to do at every city council meeting to make sure that we get the benefit of any state, federal and county programs that are out there. And these things are starting to happen. So this is an important step. Next is approval of the July twentieth, twenty twenty city council meeting minutes. Third is approval of the check register for the period of June twenty seventh to June twenty fourth, twenty twenty. Fourth is approval of a resolution amending the authorized signers for the golf course operating bank account. Fifth is approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Lake County for the COVID nineteen relief fund. I just mentioned that there are some of these programs starting to come, to come to bear fruit. And actually, in this case, there's been some recent news that just came out today on this. So I'm going to ask when I'm done reading these that Elizabeth Hollab give a brief update on the COVID nineteen relief funds coming from the county. Number six is appro, approval to renew the agreement for enterprise, enterprise research, resource management systems, software maintenance. Number seven is approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring members of boards and commissions. In this case, retiring Historic Preservation Commission Member Bill Redfield. Number eight is acceptance of the donation of a fire rescue boat from the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation. Number nine is approval of a resolution supporting the community solar clearinghouse solution program. Number ten is approval to purchase a replacement engine for refuse truck number one eighty three to Cummins Recon Engines in the amount of twenty eight thousand, six hundred and seventy eight dollars. And number eleven is award of a proposal in the amount of thirty four thousand, nine hundred and twenty two dollars with a ten percent or three thousand, four hundred and ninety two dollar contingency for a total amount of thirty eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars to Rutherford Roofing for the water treatment plant roof repairs. Elizabeth, could you give us a brief update on the COVID nineteen relief funds that are now becoming available from the county?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Penne Leon. Amber's going to bring up just a few short slides. This relates to the intergovernmental agreement on the omnibus agenda with Lake County. The next slide, Amber, we're, we're focused on a portion of the CARES Act that was approved by Congress and went into effect on March twenty seventh. Two trillion dollar package of economic relief related to coronavirus pandemic and we're addressing this evening the segment in red, which are payments to state, local and tribal governments via coronavirus relief fund, which totaled a hundred and fifty billion dollars nationwide. Next slide. The coronavirus relief fund, that one hundred and fifty billion dollars was intended to provide direct aid for COVID nineteen related expenses by state, local and tribal governments. The, the funding was allocated through a population based formula with local governments receiving funding in two different ways. If a local government, a county or a city had a population of more than five hundred thousand, they would receive a direct allocation from the US Treasury, but if they had a population of less than five hundred thousand, they would go through a state or county process. Next slide. And this shows the coronavirus relief funding available in Illinois. So Illinois was allocated a total of four point nine billion dollars. And the chart shows the allocation out over different entities. So you see that Chicago, as well as Cook County, DePage County, King County, Lake County and Will County all had populations over five hundred thousand dollars and therefore received direct allocations from the US Treasury directly to those entities. The state received the remaining funds of about three point five billion dollars or about seventy two percent of the total allocation to the state of Illinois. In red near the bottom of the chart, you can see that the allocation to Lake County was a hundred and twenty one point five million dollars or about two percent of the total allocated to the state. It's important to note that when the state approved their FY twenty one budget, they allocated funds to local governments in downstate counties only. So they took the position that municipalities included in counties that received direct allocations from the US Treasury would need to go to their counties for funding and the state would use their allocation to provide local government funding to counties and municipalities that were not included in direct allocations. Next slide. So now we look at the allotment of the funding in Illinois. So the state through the DCEO has developed a program called Local Cure Funding. To that program, they allocated two hundred million dollars or five point seven percent of the total three point five billion dollars that they received under the CARES Act. That funding will go to one thousand sixty three municipalities and ninety seven counties. And they have released an allocation for those local governments at forty one dollars and twenty five cents per capita. And they use the local government distributive fund populations for those amounts allocated to the individual local governments under that program. Lake County adopted a brogram, program called Lake County Forward and they have a committee that meets and reviews various needs for the one hundred and twenty one point five million dollars allocated to Lake County under the CRF. And this pie chart shows the current allocation. So Lake County has approved a hundred and five million dollars in allocations out of the one twenty one point five to various purposes. And you see those in the pie chart. And they have yet sixteen point five million in unallocated dollars that the committee will again make recommendations to the Lake County Board on how to allocate that funding. So if you move back to the left under Lake County Forward, so thirty five million dollars has been allocated to local governments in Lake County and that represents twenty eight point eight percent of the total allocated to Lake County. Initially and included in your agenda packet material was that nine million dollars had been allocated to the fifty two municipalities in Lake County. And it was allocated at a rate of fourteen dollars and sixty one cents per capita. In that initial allocation, Lake Forest was designated as allocated funding of two hundred and eighty four thousand, sixty seven dollars. That was the amount that was included in your agenda packet. The news we received today is actually very good news because out of the thirty five million allocated to local governments, Lake County has now allocated twenty million of the thirty five to the fifty two municipalities in Lake County, increasing the allocation to thirty two dollars and forty six cents per capita, increasing Lake Forest allocation to six hundred and thirty one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. So that is very good news. We of course must apply for that funding. As you heard on Friday via email, Lake County set an initial submittal deadline of July thirty first and we did complete that submittal and submit our initial request for funding to Lake County. They will review those applications from all of the submitting municipalities and we will hear back on that. on that hopefully in the next few weeks. They will continue to receive submittals. We are allowed to submit eligible expenses to Lake County up through October fifteenth. So the Finance Department continues to track that with the operating departments and will continue to submit in the hope of, you know, supporting and receiving the full allocation as it stands today. So I will be happy to answer any questions. And the item before you on the Omnibus Agenda is simply approval of the intergovernmental agreement with Lake County regarding the allocation of coronavirus relief funding to municipalities in the county.
Are there any items on here that any council member would like to see removed or taken separately? Or if not, are there any questions for Elizabeth about this?
Mayor, I have a, this is Alderman Gashgarian. I was just curious, I picked up on that that last eligible expenses. Do they have a clear-cut definition of what those eligible expenses are for those grants?
That is the tricky question. So that is evolving because even the guidance out of the U.S. Treasury is evolving on this. And so we we do remain current. The Lake County Municipal League has been fantastic, is really providing transfer of information from Lake County to the participating municipalities. So even today, we received revised guidance under this plan on what is eligible and not eligible. So it is evolving. And so we just try to stay current on that as those things change.
Thank you.
Alderman Bushman?
I was going to ask a similar question. How optimistic are you going to be the, we can justify the amount, but I think you've answered the question. I do have another clarifying question on on this item ten. Expenditure of twenty-nine thousand, six seventy-eight for a replacement engine. I'm wondering if we can have a comment from Mr. Locka Fear or from Public Works? Since it did not go to public bidding, it did not have any competitive bidding, how comfortable we are that it's a fair and reasonable price that we're being asked to pay for that replacement engine?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Alderman Bushman, to answer your question, staff has found this price to be both reasonable and fair. Prior to obtaining the actual proposal from Cummins, the city's fleet supervisor and seat fleet section mechanics did put together a preliminary estimate as to what they thought this price would be. We were pleased to find that their estimate was in line with this price. Further, Director Thomas and the fleet supervisor did review this price and proposal in detail and again, found found it to be both reasonable and fair.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions about any of the Omnibus items? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the eleven Omnibus items as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Hi.
Alderman Karis?
Hi.
Alderman Rummel?
Hi.
Alderman Notes?
Hi.
Alderman Preslack?
Hi.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Hi.
Alderman Bushman?
Hi.
Alderman Weber?
Hi.
Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. The next few typical items on the on the agenda, ordinances, old business, new business are all there are no no items on the agenda for those things this this month or this this week. Are there any other additional items for discussion or comments by the council members prior to our adjournment? Hey, there being none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Seconded.
We can do that by voice vote?
Yes, you can.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Opposed, the me, the motion carries. The meeting is over. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.